We'll move on to item one, approval of the agenda. There were nothing to delete this evening or add. We will be looking to have a closed session though afterwards, so.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second.
Torrey, aye.
Aye, sen aye.
Ellis, aye.
Granger, aye.
Aye, the aye.
Thank you. Item two announcements. I have one announcement, basically just a comment I would like to, since we've met, we had our Cotton Day celebration. I participated in quite a few of the events, very well attended. Saturday was extremely well attended in my mind. And I would just like to publicly thank those that are and do handle and are in charge of our Cotton Day celebration. A hearty thanks and a congratulations for a very successful week. So, thank you Cotton Days Committee, wherever you are. Maybe you're watching this right now. Thank you. You don't think I would like to share anything from the council? Okay, move on to item three, declaration of abstentions and conflicts. Anything to declare this time?
Mayor, I do, I'm going to abstain from item six A. I don't have any ownership in the property, but I do have some associations with the applicant, so.
Okay, thank you. Item four, consent agenda. We'll entertain a motion to approve the amendments for city council meetings of four eleven, four twelve, and four twenty-six.
Mayor, I'd make that a recommendation for minutes from four eleven, four twelve, and four twenty-six of two thousand seventeen.
Okay, and also the board audit report for April twenty seventeen. You want to make motion on both of those, councilman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and a second?
Aye, the aye.
Granger, aye.
Ellis, aye.
Aye, sen aye.
Torrey, aye.
Okay, those are approved. Item five, special event, consideration to approve a special event for a family fun night fundraiser. Say that real fast. At the Veterans Park on May fifteen, five to nine P.M. Applicant Courtney Anderson. Courtney here?
Okay. So, I have a map. I'm going to give you the map of our idea. You want to see it? I worked really hard. I mean, if you don't want to see it, I'm just kidding. If you do, I do have one.
Tara, can you put it on the thing?
So, there's a member of our community, Dennis Brown. He owns an excavation company and a fiberglass pool company. In this last couple of weeks, he was diagnosed with T. lymphoblastic lymphoma leukemia. So, he's got two cancers that he's fighting, and he can't work while he's up at Huntsman getting cancer treatment. He's got three little kids. And so, I am proposing that we have this fundraiser. I've got all the vendors kind of set up here. We're only going to use about half of the park. Down here. Down here on this, this is that park lot, and then back here would be the Telegraph Street, past this park, this out there. So, we've got the DJ with some live entertainment, a bounce house, and then we've got shopping vendors and games, carnival games. We have a silent auction tent set up for people that have donated items to the cause. And we have, so, shopping, games. Oh, yeah, and then the one thing that we did want to ask if it's okay to use is a dunk booth. We've got it from the Dinsmore family. Lisa Dinsmore is going to run it, be in charge of it. We just wanted to make sure if that was okay.
Remember that. Dunk booth, remember that.
As long as we're not in it.
Yeah. So, if that would be okay, if we could use the dunk booth. And then, we do have a couple of food vendors, Waffle Love, Zepi's, Italian Ice, and Custard. And then, who were the other two? Maria Mendez with Mexican Food and Drink. And Casual's Finest is a Polynesian food vendor. And then, Kalin's Kettle Corn and Lemonade Shakers. So, those are our food vendors. That's kind of everything that we have planned.
Courtney, have you visited with Chief Keith?
Yes, yeah. Originally, we had it over at Nissan Park, and he was concerned that it was going to be too big for the parking. And we didn't want to upset the residents over there with bugging their front lawns and stuff. So, that's why we moved it over here with better parking. So, I have talked with him, and that was his suggestion, so that's what we did.
Any questions?
So, it's not at Nissan Park anymore, it's Veterans?
It's at Veterans, yeah. We're at Veterans over here.
It's a short timeframe. Have you got enough time to advertise it?
Yeah, well, we've been advertising. It was on the radio, and then it was on, we've had it on social media outlets and stuff like that. So, we're planning on around two hundred in attendance through word of mouth and through, we've been, we've passed out these flyers, too. I don't know if you want to. We've got these flyers all around. Up at the Washington City Community Center. People that are helping out have put on flyers at work and just posted in their neighborhoods. Specifically, in the Browns family and their ward buildings and stuff like that, so.
The one thing that I see missing off your application is the Recorder's Certificate of Insurance.
Okay.
I don't know, Denise, have you had a chance to look at that?
I sent, yeah, I sent everything over to Wendy, so if I need to get something else, let me know.
Yeah, it's just not been signed off on, on the application, which is obviously something that.
Needs to be done, for sure.
Yeah, just make sure that, when you get with Wendy or whatever, make sure to follow up that we have that.
And then, just let me know.
Looks like the rest of the application is complete.
Okay.
And it goes till nine o'clock at night?
Yeah, yeah.
With your DJ and all, that'd be my only concern, is probably at nine o'clock, at least the DJ shuts down, whether the rest of the party.
For sure, yeah. And we figured it with it being a Monday night, that it's kind of a family night, and most families are going to be going home around eight. So, we figure the biggest time is going to be between six and eight. We'll have wingers come in between five and six, and then some people staying after eight. But, yeah, we'll be done at nine, and then we'll be done cleaning up by nine thirty with as many hands as we have helping. Okay.
Yeah, it's just the noise, it carries in the downtown area, and with music and stuff, sometimes, some of those older people especially are, they get ready for bed a little earlier than some of the rest of us do, so be courteous of them.
We will.
Any other questions?
I guess I did, sorry. I just remembered one more thing. Is the power, do we have the power turned on, on those power? The power boxes? Okay, do you want me to call that, do I call them and let them know, or?
Yeah, well, it would be best if you did.
I will. Okay, just to make sure. Okay, okay. I'll write that down. Cool. That was all I had.
Okay, no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve a special event for a family fun night fundraiser at the Veterans Park on May fifteenth from five P.M. to nine P.M.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second?
Torrey, aye.
Aye, sen aye.
Ellis, aye.
Granger, aye.
Aye, the aye.
Okay, have fun.
Thank you.
It's a great cause. Item six, minor subdivision, consideration to approve a minor subdivision, excuse me, plat, for Primavera Minor Subdivision located approximately Green Springs Drive at Buena Vista Boulevard. Advocate Myers Properties LLC.
Thank you, Mayor. As stated, the applicant's request and approval for the Primavera Minor Subdivision plat located at approximately the northeast corner of Green Springs Drive and Buena Vista, and that's a little bit of exaggeration, but that's the best way to explain where it's at. And that's there right next to the golf course. I've known, you know what hole that is, Mayor, don't you? That before you come back.
It's twelve, isn't it?
For being on that side of Green Springs Drive, is it twelve? It's eleven and twelve. It's total twelve, right there. This is that, kind of that area, just beyond the Chevron. Anyway, the applicant's wishing to subdivide the present twelve point three five acre parcel into three lots. Lot number one of the subdivision will be three point two zero acres. Lot number two of the subdivision will be two point nine six acres. And lot three will be six point zero six acres, with remaining zero point one three dedicated to the city in the form of turning lanes. It'll be coming in, you can barely notice them on that, off the Washington. So, that's where that, because I was adding up all the numbers and it didn't come to the three thirty, or twelve thirty-five. And then I realized we had these decel lanes or turn lanes that have been, that'll be dedicated to the city and makes up the remaining portion. The newly created lot one will be for the new proposed hotel that's been received the CUP. And it'll probably be updated here in the next week or our next planning commission of the one after that. The hotel changed just a little bit, but that's going to be on lot number one. And the other two lots are just being prepared for future commercial developments so that the owner of the property can be able to sell those when people come instead of doing it later date. So, they'll be kind of pre-prepared and done for them. The proposed minor subdivision is currently zoned the service commercial C two with the surrounding zoning of PUD to the north and west and C two to the east and south. Staff reviewed the proposed request and finds that the Primavera Minor Subdivision conforms to the standards set forth in the zoning regulations and in the subdivision ordinance. The planning commission reviewed this request last week at their May third, two thousand seventeen meeting. They unanimously recommended approval of the Primavera Minor Subdivision to the city council. And that's based on the findings and subject to the conditions. And those four, we usually have five standard conditions, but the one that we leave out in this case is the one that talks about HOA and property owners will be responsible for maintaining, and we don't have that particular scenario in this case. So, didn't bother putting that one on, but they're the standard conditions that you would find in a final plat. So, that's in essence what a minor subdivision is, is a final plat. And with that said, I'll be glad to answer any questions that the council might have.
I'm assuming that where we've got the private streets showing in there, that those are part of, part of the plat at this point?
At this point, yes. And they'll be the accesses, you know, because it's going to be almost like a commercial area, multi-tenants, but they'll all own different pieces. And that'll just be the road that binds them all together, so to speak, you know, where they'll probably make the main drives out of their parking lots.
I just want to make sure we have access, that indeed that access is there and in place and not just showing us that. And then, once it's all subdivided, saying, "Well, that really, we just, you know, it's not needed, it's not part of the plat, it's just kind of, we showed it."
Yeah.
So, I want to make sure that that is indeed part of what we're there, that those accesses are in place for those properties.
They do, and just for your note, this, especially this main one up here, falls in line with the entrance over into the High Chaparral Development. This lower, there's, you've seen this other radius right here. It's kind of that emergency exit access into that, too, but it's a curb cutout on the opposite side. So, they're going to line those up, not have them staggered, which is good access management planning there, so.
And I really like the decel lanes. I think that's an important part of that, so I certainly appreciate those applicants' willingness to work with us on that. That would be a nice asset there.
Any other questions, comments? Are we ready for a motion?
Mayor, I move approval of the minor subdivision plat for the Primavera Minor Subdivision located at approximately Green Springs Drive and Buena Vista Boulevard.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second?
Aye, the aye.
Granger, aye.
Aye, sen aye.
Torrey, aye.
That passes, with one abstention. Item seven, ordinance, consideration to approve an ordinance granting zone change request, Z dash seventeen dash thirteen to amend the current zoning designation for Washington Vista to allow for an extraction overlay zone located approximately twenty-three hundred north, seven hundred west. Advocate Matt Law.
Thank you, Mayor. This is one of the items in what we refer to now as a two-week holding period. The two weeks has passed. Just briefly, again, they're seeking for this four point one five acre area designated in that green shaded part as part of the Washington Vista overall development to be a staging area for rock crushing, then loading and removing items. And again, this is a difference of having stuff brought, so many truckloads brought up. Green Springs would dump good stuff on that they'd have to buy while, versus them being able to crush most of it, use it on site, and only have X amount exiting. So, it's, I think I referenced, it's a ninety-trip ratio versus five hundred plus semi-truck ratio. So, with the extraction overlay would be ninety trucks going out, and without it, it would be five hundred between some going out and other stuff being brought in. So, that's kind of what the purpose behind this extraction area is. Does have the time limits, et cetera, is all part of the conditions. Again, the planning commission's recommendation was for approval unanimously for the overlay zone of the fourteen, or the four point one five acre area to be used as an extraction overlay zone with the findings and the conditions. And be glad to answer any questions you might have in the time that we've had this in the holding period.
Would you reiterate the timing conditions, the watering and keeping the dust down conditions, and the noise conditions that might accompany this?
Yeah, I can briefly, sorry, I've got something in my eye that's.
As far as noise goes, it's all, I've walked the site up there. It's as far as they could possibly get from any residences.
Well, the Turtle Reserve, yeah, is right there at the edge, so, yeah.
And they have had water up on it, they were watering it when I was there. They've been crushing up there on site. This is just to allow them to export, you know, those ninety loads.
Yeah, because during construction of a development, we allow them to crush the rock, et cetera, but it's when they try to haul something off for use. In other words, we're using it as a sand and gravel pit is the best way to try to explain it. That's when they have to go for an extraction overlay zone. That's why they're coming in for this, is because the need to haul certain stuff off they can't use on there, so.
That timing might also be important. There are times when that road is busier than others, when children are going to the Montessori school, for example, or people are leaving for work. If we could put them into the major part of the day when it's not so busy, it might be helpful.
I think they can, they can go straight on to Green Springs Drive.
Yeah, they can go there, and the other good thing about it is, I think, I don't know, does the Montessori quit the same time regular school quits? Because we know we're down to the last, we're down to the last couple of weeks of school. So, I think by the time this gets through and everything going, school will pretty much be out. And then they have a certain window of time they've got to be done, as we put in, and again, I'm trying to.
Can we, can we require that, well, let's see, being, so, their application says that they're going to use Green Springs Drive, right? Can we require that? I don't want to see them using Fairway Drive as much as possible, because.
No, you can, you.
You don't have residences on Green Springs, you do on Fairway.
Well, I think you have every right to say that all traffic will go onto Green Spring, you know, directly onto the Green Springs Drive from this, because that's the closest road for them to get to, per se, anyways, to come down that way. Well, I hope they can, they may have to make a little bit of a path, but it won't take that much to get there.
I think we discussed that in planning commission meeting. I went, I was at the planning commission meeting when this was discussed, and there was homeowners that lived nearby that were there. And I think most of their concerns were addressed and taken care of. It was to do with dust and time and limits, and it looks like most of them have been.
Yeah, we put in hours of operation of seven to seven. And again, they'll, just because our city code requires dust control, you know, even on this, but it'll be part thereof, is that they have to mitigate all those, minimize the possibility of anything that would be going that way.
Well, they may not even want to be going seven to seven, but I'd suggest nine to four.
Again, you guys can put, I mean, talk about that amongst, you know, but that is part of a condition on this, and we can put conditions on these overlay zones, so that would be something you could talk amongst yourselves, so.
They even talked about using the material for other uses, but really, what they're crushing can't be used for compaction or.
Well, there's going to be certain items that they can't get and that they need to haul off. A lot of, they're going to try to make their own road bases, kind of what they're doing from my understanding, and other, you know, compaction for some of the lots when they raise them to put in a good base under them. They'll use as much as they can on site to do that, instead of bringing in material from some other place and having to pay for the trucking and all that. So, that's what this is going to be doing, is kind of creating their own kind of feel for streets, lots, whatever it may be.
Any other questions or comments?
Just one comment, kind of going off your hours of operation. I guess my thought is that the fewer hours we give them during the day, the longer we prolong the project out. So, I guess I kind of get torn about, do we, do we set the hours and say, "Okay, nine to four is where it is," and expect that we're going to go another week longer rather than saying, "Let's get them in and get them out and get that traffic out of there."
How many loads do they do a day, do you know?
Who knows?
Well, they're probably, they're probably looking three, maybe four loads a day, because they're going the other side of Ivans. So, they've got to have time to be able to load it, truck it, offload it, come back. And three to four loads a day is all they're really going to get out of it.
Yeah, I'm not so.
Well, if they're true to their numbers that they put in their application, they have roughly ninety to maybe a hundred loads going out in a forty-five day period. That tells me that, you know, that's.
Too loads a day.
But you take Sunday and Saturdays out of that, you know, because that's the time. So, it's two to three loads a day is what it's going to, going to be in that time.
Do we have a time limit for how long it's going to take them to do this?
Yeah, and then we give them some time if, in case there's weather or other things that, you know, we, they have to come and apply to staff and saying, "We need to pick up five days because we lost five days because of this. If we feel it's legitimate, we'll give them the five days."
Correct me if I'm wrong, but what they've requested is, they're going to get a bunch of material built up, and then they're going to come in and say, "Okay, we're starting our clock at that point," and then they're going.
Well, I kind of, I don't.
It's not soon as we approve it.
I'm trying to remember.
One thing, one thing I. One thing I see, too, with restricting the hours, you might hurt their employees, you know, on their, how they do their time.
Well, if we're looking at two or three loads a day, I don't think that's.
Probably, yeah.
Well, I think, from what I was told, they wanted to start as soon as possible, so I put on here, the clock will start ticking the day after the approval. But I think, I'm hoping, I mean, if, again, if they say, "Well, they're not ready, we're going to start," I'm more than willing to work and just say, "If it's going to be four days from now, we'll start that," you know, but we'll get with them to make sure that the day they start, that's when that clock starts. But we don't want it hanging out here too long. I'd really like it to be, like I say, I wouldn't mind if they waited a week now that we know school will be out in that time, so, but then we'll start then. So, we'll get with them if this gets approved in the next day or two.
Let us know, in case you get some questions, we can answer how long it's going to be from when it starts.
Barring any further discussion, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve an ordinance granting zone change request, Z dash seventeen dash thirteen to amend the current zoning designation for Washington Vista to allow for an extraction overlay zone located approximately twenty-three hundred north and seven hundred west. But in addition to that, that's limited to a forty-five day window, and.
Seven to seven hours.
Seven A.M. to seven P.M. We should use Green Springs Drive and avoid Fairway Drive.
Yeah, all the others are conditions in there that you mentioned around there, but the only one which would just be limited to Green Springs Drive is a condition number eight.
And I'll second that.
Motion and a second?
Aye, the aye.
Granger, aye.
Ellis, aye.
Aye, sen aye.
Torrey, aye.
Thank you, that is approved. Item B, consideration to approve an ordinance granting zone change request, Z dash seventeen dash fourteen, to change the current zone designation from agricultural twenty acre lots, A twenty to residential family, single family, fifteen hundred square foot lots, R dash one dash fifteen zone, located approximately two forty west, thirty-eight thirty south. Advocate Lester Jessup.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is one of those items in the two-week holdover. Again, the applicant's just wishing to change his property from the A twenty to the R one fifteen for future residential development. The planning commission reviewed it, held their public hearing. They unanimously recommended approval of Z dash seventeen dash fourteen to go from Ag twenty to R one fifteen for this particular request. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have had.
No questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve ordinance, Z dash seventeen dash fourteen, to change the current zoning designation from agricultural twenty to R one fifteen, located at approximately two forty west, thirty-eight thirty south.
Second.
Thank you, have a motion and a second?
Torrey, aye.
Aye, sen aye.
Ellis, aye.
Granger, aye.
Aye, the aye.
Thank you. Item C, consideration to approve an ordinance granting zone change request, Z dash seventeen dash fifteen, to change current zone designation from planned unit development to revised planned unit development zone located approximately Buena Vista Drive and Hundred South. Advocate S.J. Holding Property, S.J. Property Holding, excuse me, LLC.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, this is one of the two weeks, the third of the fourth, the third of four that will be seen tonight. The one note on this I put in your report is that there have been new elevations, and I think they were put in your packets. There were three for the three different styles that they're going to have, because that was one of the questions, is they wanted to understand and to know that they needed to put whatever elevations are going to be built. That's what's being, needs to be approved. So, they did go and pencil that down and drill down into it, and that's the ones that they're proposing to you. So, they kind of sent those in those three forms. We could probably bring those up right now, because it's probably appropriate, because that was. So, we don't require them to do the floor plans, but this is the floor plans on the one units, the six plexes with the two-car garages. And then here's what the elevations will look like. Again, it's a craftsman style. Again, I'm happy to see something different than the St. George stucco, is what everybody used to call down here. It seemed like every home looked alike, and I'm glad to see the craftsmen coming in. And this is kind of what the fronts will look like, the rears, and then the sides on those big six-plex two-car garage. And the other units they'll have, because they have some alley, we'll bring those up one by one. These are the four plexes with the two-car garage that'll be coming in from the backside. So, these are the ones that'll be facing streets with alleys behind. Not so much alleys, it'll be the private streets, but they'll be entering their garages from the back of the home. And that's their kind of floor plans. And then here's the elevations on those four plexes that you've seen on the main thing. Again, these are the fronts, then entering in at the two-car garage in the back. And then the side elevations on those homes. And then the third design will be the four plexes that have the front garages and some balconies associated with these. Again, these, the front and backs, and then the side elevations. These will be the ones that'll be entered in as the exhibits of what will be built on site if approved. So, with that said, I'll let that come up. And so, that is the changes that did occur for that, and they needed to be for that, that request. The planning commission, again, unanimously recommended approval of Z dash seventeen dash fifteen for the zone change request from the old planned unit development to the proposed new planned unit development. And of course, that's based on the findings and subject to the conditions that have been in the report. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have had over the two weeks.
No questions, comments?
I don't have any questions. And I think that there's been some concern, at least a concern expressed to me, and a concern I have, and I've expressed it to the applicant as well. You know, quantity is one concern that I have. And I don't personally like playing in the clay too much. I think it opens up liabilities, like it opens up issues. And I think we need to work with the applicant. And I don't know if it's best done tonight, or best done maybe in a workshop, or something like that, to work with them on what, what is probably palatable to the council, because I don't want them to go back and, you know, it's a lot of money for them every time that they throw a dart at the target, you know, and if they're continually.
And if I may tag on to that just a little bit, is there's the frustration with all the residents around, saying, well, we keep getting shown this, and shown this, and shown this, and this is part of the issue, is it's, you know, we keep throwing these, and, and so there's, that, that's part of their frustration, but they, you know, wherein lies is that we keep asking for something different, so...
Well, I understand that, and the applicant's gone, and, okay, well, the, the, this neighborhood says they don't like this, so let's try and modify that.
Yeah.
So, that's why you got twenty different revisions...
Revisions.
...of the overall project. But at the end of the day, I understand what the neighborhood concerns are in the red, in, you know, especially through the public hearing, but this body's the one that gets to, you know, have a say-so. We, we haven't really been as involved in the, in, in the design side of it. If that makes sense?
Yeah. Oh, absolutely.
The first application that came through that was straight zoning, you know, there was, there was concerns with that one, which is why it was shot down. We wanted to see it remain in a PUD. And, and, you know, I know Councilman Turek's expressed, he wants to see, you know, some varying product in that PUD. I personally would like to see some varying product in the PUD. And, and I, to try and make the clay pencil, I, I don't, I'm apprehensive to put a lot of homes into it. I know Santa Clara's had their issues. They've purchased properties because of clay. Anytime you're dealing with the clay, you gotta, issues with maintenance and roads and sidewalks and, and all that, so, if there's, I think if, if this, if this doesn't move forward as presented, I think I'd like to probably try and find a workshop session that, to work with the applicant on, on pulling something together.
I have a question. If, if we give permits for known clay issues, serious ones, who's liable? If those homes move and there are difficulties, it does seem to some degree that Santa Clara's been liable.
Yeah, but I don't know their whole history on how that came about, and that was back in the day before what a lot of cities now do, is that we make them go through and, and what a lot of cities are doing is, we're putting the engineers on, on the hook, so to speak. We make the geotecs really earn their money in this, and they're supposed to come up with those designs with over excavation. And then what's brought in is fill on top of that and the compaction part thereof. And so, cities now, you can build in clay, you just, you gotta involve the engineers a whole lot more than what they used to back in the failures that took place. Even in our own city, we have up, up on the bench that we've had some, and that's because it was during the boom time, and they did a lot, they were just throwing stuff in, washes, et cetera, and some clay up there, but because of compaction of that, knowing there was some clay, that they didn't, they really didn't dig into it and find out what they need to do on over X, et cetera.
Well, the issue on telegraph was clay.
Yeah.
And that was just last year. I mean, it's, it's, anytime you're dealing with clay, you're dealing, you're dealing with liability.
You know, the best mitigation is to not build on it. I mean, there's always a chance. You know, you can do a lot of things.
Or it's what, it's how you build or what you build on it, and I won't touch those because it may not...
No, because I don't know that that's our...
It isn't.
...our issue, but, I mean, that's something that needs to definitely be considered through the process, because the damage that the chenille, the blue clay has created throughout the southern Utah, through Arizona and the western states, it's pretty well documented. But I would just like to add to it, to Councilman Bellis' stat. I, I do agree that the applicant needs to have an idea, and I'm in favor of workshop also. But as I looked at this project, I felt like, you know, I looked at one of the strategies in our residential land use plan, and it says that large developments of a single unit type design should be avoided. And I saw a lot of sameness in this project. One thing that lacked when I looked at it was single home type dwellings. And I understand that, you know, you put more doors in, in one foundation, there's more money there, but I really think that there was a, a void in this proposal that, that I would like to, you know, just to put it out there at this point. And I know there's room for discussion and, and beyond that, but just to be fair, I am very concerned about the applicant, and I want them to be able to have an idea of what, what we would approve, because it is expensive.
I, I think there's a fairness issue too, as they deserve to get clear direction. They shouldn't have to keep coming back guessing what's on our minds. Workshop sounds like a good solution to that, but, you know, I'm sure that this development is enhanced by the Buena, or the Bella Vista development. But the question is, is the Bella Vista development enhanced by this development? I think that to be mutually having the feeling that they're both enhanced by that, and the issues with residents don't seem to be, from what I've received, that they don't believe that there won't be a development there. They know that that land's gonna be developed, somebody owns it, they're gonna develop it, they wanna make a profit, okay, they wanna make some money off of the land, something's going to happen. But as close as we can, I'd like them to feel like it's an enhancement, you know, rather than a detriment. I'd like to feel that way as a city, that we're providing the kind of housing that we need in the city, but we're not doing too much of the same thing. And I, I know our next issue is short-term overlay, but I think those two things are obviously combined in this development, we're gonna have to resolve it some way.
The other issue for me on this, and the, and the concern I have, is when it, when it was brought forward in the general plan, and, and I don't, don't get me wrong, I'm not opposed to granting some additional density over what was presented in the general plan, but I think the way that motion was written and, or, or put forth, that that limited, that even though it went to medium-high density, that that limited the medium-high density. And, and that's an ordinance, it's on our books now, because of the motion that was put forward by that prior council, I don't know that I would've done it the same way. But, either how that's, how the motion reads, that's kind of what I feel...
And, and I took that into consideration. That was one of those onion, I, I explained to you guys many times, I take this onion and I have to start peeling it off to put everything in perspective. And just, just so you know where I came from, why I even, you know, brought this forward, is I started, I, I had to really take this project as a whole, is what I then had to do. And I thought, well, okay, I can sit there and beat them up before they ever came to you and say, okay, in this area right here, we talked about on the south of Bonnie Lane, part of that motion was ten and eights.
Our own ten.
And so, I took that density, you know, per acre, which is, you know, basically, it, it ends up being on that, it's four to five dwelling units per acre. For those two, I just, again, put them together just for argument's sake. And then I come up to the part that was the medium-high density, which it's seven to twelve dwelling units per acre. And, so when I take the project north of Bonnie Lane, it's well under, it's well under the unit per acre. And so, I took the whole project and I, I did the average. You know, what would it be if these were ten thousand square foot lots in that corner that was talked about in the motion? And then we did the eight thousands right here, how many units would probably end up in there? And then when I took the acreage for the medium-high in that area, and I took how many units would be in there? And so, I, I came up, again, it's about the total number of units. So, the question I thought is, do we stuff and overcrowd the north of Bonnie Lane, so we fit within the, the motion things, and less crowded on the south end, and make it feel like we've gone from this jungle to something that's less of a jungle? Or do we just kind of spread it all out and make it even and make a project that's cohesive throughout the whole thing? Because the dwelling units are still gonna be the same number on the acreage. And so, that's why, you know, I had to part of my onion while I felt like, well, okay, I'll, I, I think it's presentable, because it still fits within that umbrella for the entire project. Does that make sense, kind of what I did? So, they're really not getting anything benefit, it's just that we, we made it kind of equal all the way across the board, so...
I understand that, but you also understand why the, the different neighborhoods are frosted, you know, lack of a better word, over, over the, the application, because they were, they were pitched pretty heavily by the prior partner in the land, that this is all we're doing. Well, new, new guys coming in, they're changing that. You know what I mean? It, it's, you understand why there's been some frustrations there, you know, in the community.
Oh, yeah, there's no doubt. It, it's frustrating, but again, the more times, and, and that frustration builds, as I've been doing this for as long, is the more times you keep bringing a project back, people just get tired of having to show up, you know? Every three, four, so whatever it ends up being, they just get tired of having to be there to fight against the next, the next, the next.
I, I do think for the applicant's sake, that, you know, if, if we did grant this project as a whole, the amount of units, I think they're gonna find a point where they kind of burn out on, on build, you know, on sales or, or whatever else. And so, if, if we proved it the way it is with no differing product within the PUD, there's some concerns that, you know, you're gonna get to a point, and it's like, okay, that's about max for what that is, and then you're bringing back in new development plan, and does that make the most sense? What, it was brought up at one point, what are the fees that they're paying every time they submit this to the city?
Oh, you know, I don't have their application with me, though, I'm just trying to, a, a zone change is three hundred dollars minimum, but then you have acreage on top of that, so I'm not sure...
Well, given the size of it and the size of the acreage, you know, it's probably a pretty penny to submit, and then they got denied last time, and then repay to submit, you know? I, I would think we could probably, I'd be in favor of backing off the fees if, if this doesn't move forward, to do, you know, to sit down and work with them and find something that's, that'll work for everybody and not have to recome up with those funds, or resubmit those funds.
Yeah, the only issue I'd have with that is the mailing notices, but if you wanna eat that too, that's...
That's just a few bucks, that's nothing. You know, it's...
Well, this one's more, this one's a little more than a, a few bucks, but that's, I'm just bringing that as a, a side note, 'cause there are a lot of people within the three hundred feet in this one. In fact, my tongue's still a little bit raw from licking the envelopes helping Kathy, and I only did a portion.
They, they have peelers.
I know, but I, you know...
I can get you a wet sponge, if that helps.
Kathy actually has a nice glue stick, but she goes, well, I said, because I'm gonna, you know, it's the martyr in me that I love to...
I, I echo Councilman Bellis' feelings about that. I do feel that the applicants have paid for a PUD and shouldn't have to, because this one we denied, say, well, you're gonna pay again. I certainly think that that would, would only be right if this one is denied, that, it's the process, the way that they paid for. I think it's been pretty well stated what my feelings are about it, simply that I appreciate Councilman Ivy's saying it in much better words than I can, of saying, a diversified product to me is important. When we put this big of a project together with the same-looking product throughout it, to me, that isn't what we, we spell out in our general plan, we don't want. And so, that's been something that I have, have talked very openly about, is I feel like that there should be some diversified product in here. This project's big enough that I think that it can, can work. It's probably just a matter of sitting down and seeing how we can make it work together. The other concern I have is, is our eleven hundred east project. It gets, it gets presented as a road coming through there, and everybody points their finger at everybody else that's gonna pay for that road. And so, I certainly think that there needs to be some development agreements signed and brought forward as part of the approval process of this, of who and when, and how is that road gonna be put in. Right now, everybody's saying, yeah, it's coming, and they're all pointing fingers at each other, and, and I think so that would be an important part of this project as well.
Any other comments?
I think I tend to agree with everything that's been said up to a point. I think that, that it's definitely, needs to be maybe diversified, maybe more, and to the, the traffic and the people, that the concerns of the emails I've got with the people that's living on the, on Bella Vista, I think, need to be addressed, maybe. But I think they wanna see something go forward too. They, they realize that that property's not gonna stand vacant for, for too long.
It's such a big project, you have to wonder what parts of it will ever get done financially, if, if there's even a need for such project, but I suppose that's not our concern, at least we're not holding the financial end of that. But, yeah, I agree, we want something attractive, diversified, that's an asset to the neighborhood. I think some of the open spaces are. I think bringing in the amenities definitely is, but the sameness of all of those units and they're uncomfortable, it appears to all of us.
Okay, with all that said, anybody ready to stab at a motion, or make a stab at a motion?
I'll make a stab at your motion. I'll make a motion that we deny the zone change request, Z dash seventeen dash fifteen, from PUD to revised PUD, located approximately Bella Vista Drive and one hundred south.
Do you wanna add the, no additional fees on that?
Certainly, we could add that. I think that's pretty well put into the minutes, but yeah, we can make that a part of the motion, that we would like that to, to sit down with the applicants and see if we can make something work here at no cost going forward for another PUD as part of that.
Now, did you state a reason for denial? I just, because we're supposed to do that.
I didn't. I, I think it's been pretty well said that, several things, but the, the project, basically, there's a concern with the densities that are there, and, and this similarities of all the, the properties looking alike and being such a large project with a, a similar look to it, and also the access of eleven hundred east being a concern that needs to be addressed as part of coming forward. Certainly appreciate the applicants finally getting us some, some accurate pictures to look at, to say, that was one of my concerns coming in, is that, you know, they're gonna be kind of like this, is kind of how it's been presented, and with PUDs, I don't like that. So, certainly appreciate them and their work coming forward, giving us the exact look and so we know what we're working with there. So, anyway, that'd be my motion.
I'll, I'll second his motion with some comments. I, I do like the elevations personally. I like some of the craftsman styling, it's good to see some different stuff, and so where the applicant does choose to incorporate that, I, you know, certainly don't want wasted cost on, you know, the plans and stuff that were drawn up. I'd also like to ask staff to find a workshop session as soon as possible to get them moving forward with, with our involvement, so that they're not spinning their wheels and wasting time.
I'd be glad to do that.
Okay, I'll have a motion in a second.
Ivy, aye.
Grainger, aye.
Bellis, aye.
Nice and aye.
Turek, aye.
Okay. That one is denied. Item D, consideration to approve an ordinance granting zone change request, Z dash seventeen dash sixteen, to change the current zoning designation from planned unit development to planned unit development with a residential rental, short-term overlay zone, located approximately Bella Vista Drive and one hundred south, African S J Property Holdings LLC.
Mayor, I don't know that there needs to be any discussion on this, from the mere fact there is no PUD to, to worry about doing an overlay zone, as that was just denied. So, I'd make the motion that this one also would be denied as the fact that there is nothing there to zone at this point with an overlay.
I'll, I'll second that again, but I also, I think that I don't have much heartache over having some overnight rental, or some overnight rental zone as we move forward. I'm not against doing some of it, to this extent, I, I think it's quite a bit, but I think we can have, be a little bit more productive when we do sit down with the applicant in the workshop and, and figure out what, what makes sense, so that we can work through those issues with them.
So noted. Okay, I'll have a motion in a second.
Turek, aye.
Nice and aye.
Bellis, aye.
Grainger, aye.
And I just wanna add, did I agree with that? I think that the question has been with the overlay, some, none, or all, and I would definitely support some. Ivy, aye.
Thank you. Okay, that one is also not approved. Item E, consideration to approve an ordinance, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, vacating the Silverado condominiums, located one eighty-four west, three hundred north, applicant Washington C.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to give you a brief little history why we're doing this, this... This condominium townhome project was approved to be vacated several years ago. Something happened, we're not sure what happened, but it never did get taken to the county and vacated out. We already approved it once, but because a time lapse has happened, the county's needing something that's more current. And so with that, they also said that we can do vacations by ordinance, so we're simply here to do a little bit of house cleaning and get this ordinance for these landowners to take with their newly approved plat that you approved as part of that PUD. They can take them in at the same time, have the, this ordinance vacating it recorded at the county, and then the county can follow up at the same time.
This is the one that's the PUD?
It's the PUD up here in the south, it's south of the Boilers, so to speak, on that.
What is it, like 200 East, West, 200 West?
It's 400 North, around 300, between 200 and 300, yes. And it's right below the, there's a, can't remember which, manufactured home park is up above our mobile home park.
My Blue Havens.
My Blue Havens, they're right up above them on a retaining wall. So that's this area. So again, we're just doing this as a, getting this ordinance passed by you good people to be able to allow them to take it to the county and get this vacated. I mean, they've been paying taxes on this subdivision for quite a while.
First one.
That's, this one that you see before you is the one that's recorded at the county, which was actually a condominium complex.
Correct.
Approved, that was one of the first projects I did when I started here over 10 years ago. And it's been sitting there like this ever since, so they're just simply asking for an ordinance passed by the city council so they can get it vacated off the books, so they can record the new Silverado Townhome project. And that's simply what this is. I'll be glad to answer any questions if there are any, but again, it's just some house cleaning.
Sounds really straightforward.
It's about as straightforward as we can get nowadays.
Everything's.
Exactly.
Barring any discussion, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve an ordinance 2017-18 vacating the Silverado condominiums located at 184 West 300 North.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second.
Ivy, aye.
Granger, aye.
Bellison, aye.
Nice, aye.
Turek, aye.
Thank you, that is approved. Item F, consideration to approve ordinance 2017-23 approving slash ratifying ordinance 2016-12. The extending, extending the corporate limits of Washington City to include the annexation of a parcel of real property located approximately 450 West, 3650 South, and amending the Washington City zoning map to zone and designate this area as R115 upon its annexation to the city. City Recorder?
Yes. Hey, we have a timeframe when our annexations are to be recorded. From the time you guys give your final approval till we can take it over to the recorder's office. This particular plat has hit every road bump imaginable. From, we won't go from what things were being recorded. Anyway, in talking with the Lieutenant Governor's Office to fix this problem, all we need to do is pass an ordinance saying you guys acknowledge the fact that there is an annexation that you approved, and the ordinance says that it's okay to keep going. So it's all completed, everything's ready, the letter's waiting, we're just trying to help follow through with this.
This is mainly just kind of extending that process.
Yeah, yeah, it just sets that 30-day time limit up again so that we can be in compliance with state law. It's a bookkeeping kind of issue.
About as easy as the last, the last one.
Yep.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval of ordinance 2017-23 approving and ratifying ordinance 2016-12 to extend the corporate limits.
I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second.
Turek, aye.
Nice, aye.
Bellison, aye.
Granger, aye.
Ivy, aye.
Thank you, Council, that is approved. Item eight resolutions, consideration to approve a resolution R2017-06 approving slash ratifying the real estate purchase agreement between Washington City and the Leah Hough, Leah Hafenhough Living Trust for the purchase of the property located 140 North Main Street, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, of course, we have to go through this public process of adopting the resolution with the council taking action on the fact of the real property purchase of the home located at 140 North Main Street. And that agreement has been signed, and it will close June 30th. And so unless there's any question, this is the formal action with respect to.
Do you have any plans on what we're gonna do with that property?
No, as a matter of fact, no, no.
That we need it for?
Right now, it's mostly land bank, so we don't have a specific purpose at the moment. And for that, and so what my recommendation would be in the short term, since we don't have an immediate use for it, but we always we found ourselves as a city kind of a little less on the land availability side, and so this is an important step for us to continue just to have land for the future for us. But again, we don't have a specific purpose now. In the short term, I would probably recommend there is no real value, just bulldozing it over. And so I would recommend, and quite frankly, there's probably a need out there for some space. I'd probably just recommend that we get a management company just lease that and handle that for us for the short term and fund.
I would agree with that, at least get somebody in there.
Yep.
Can utilize it.
There's been a lot of discussion over the few councils I've been a part of, and that home's been an important, because of our city assets here in this part, that home's always been discussed as part of the importance, whether we have a park extension, whether it's city facilities extensions or whatnot. And so I think that that's, that's it's been an ongoing discussion over the last several years that I've been a part of the council, so I think that's part of why we're moving forward with this.
I think, Roger, it's pretty important that if we do that, that it's spelled out very clear in any lease documents that city owns it and will take it back as, when we need it. I happen to witness one of our neighboring mayors getting dressed down pretty good by somebody that was being affected by the home that that city owned. And so.
That's probably a great point. Also, I would say that if, you know, if passed and that I would welcome the council's opportunity to at least walk over, and we have that ability to do so, and walk through the home and just see it. And other things I'd like, we have a set of keys. There still needs to be cleaned out, but that's what will happen kind of the mid-June, and that's what we worked out with the Colonel.
Any other items on this to discuss? Not all entertaining motion.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve a resolution R2017-06 approving and ratifying the real estate purchase agreement between Washington City and Leah Hafenhough Living Trust for the purchase of the property located at 140 North Main Street, Washington.
Washington in a second.
Turek, aye.
Nice, aye.
Bellison, aye.
Granger, aye.
Ivy, aye.
Thank you, that is approved. We'll move forward on that. Item B, consideration to approve a resolution accepting the 2017-2018 tentative budget for Washington City and setting the date for a public hearing to consideration adopting of the final budget.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, just as maybe the council's aware of this, but just maybe for the benefit of the public, once the council adopts the tentative budget, then it is open for public review. And that will occur over the next approximately 30 days, with a recommended public hearing date of June 14th to be said as the resolution. Just to highlight a couple of things for the public, what we try to do is whet their appetite, so they have a desire to come in and read the whole document. We've not been terribly successful in times past in doing that, so I'll try to add a little spice to this. The total budget of the city is $55,477,175. The 2018 budget does anticipate in the general fund revenue of approximately a 1.8% increase over fiscal year 2017. Sales and use tax anticipated about 3.5% up, and charges for services about 1.6, with all other revenue, general fund revenues being somewhat stable. We are anticipating a little slower growth projection, and again, these are just projections, so they're very difficult to do at times. Approximately 375 permits in the upcoming year, which would be a fairly stable market for us. Our enterprise funds are projected at a 9.7% increase in overall revenues. As far as capital outlay is concerned, we have a total budget of $11,639,249. And we've identified within the transmittal letter the specific items that are included in that capital facility projection for the year. So the general fund expenditure shows an increase over the current year of approximately 1.8% is the small increase, very conservative with expenditure adjustments. So that makes the breakdown of the fund, the general fund of $15,819,500. The combined special revenue debt and internal service funds of $3,397,529. The enterprise funds of $32,103,170, and the capital project fund total $4,156,976. For, again, the grand total of $55,477,175. All enterprise and special revenue departments presented their budget in accordance with the guidelines that they received. These departments, again, have forecasted very conservatively, both in their revenue and expenditures. And I appreciate and express not only my appreciation to the staff that has worked so hard on this, but to the council who has also been involved in this process since approximately January. And it's always a long process, and I know the citizens don't see the process that occurs, but essentially is a four to six month process that this council's involved in. And into the smallest of details, and I sure appreciate the direction the council's given on that. So with that, Mayor, and without any question, then staff would recommend the adoption of the tentative budget. Oh, and just a reminder again, that the adoption of the tentative budget does not indicate changes, will not necessarily, and can still occur, especially based upon public hearing, public input, other things. So it is just, again, to give us the opportunity now to present to the to the community the proposed budget.
Thank you. Any questions for City Manager? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. But I'll preface that motion that the lack of discussion, at least for the public, the lack of discussion tonight is not that we just absorb what our city manager put in front of us, it's we've been having a lot of discussions and workshop, workshops and back and forth, and we've beaten this one up pretty good. So those discussions have taken place prior to this night. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve a resolution accepting the 2017-2018 tentative budget for Washington City and setting the date for a public hearing to consideration adoption of the final budget.
To be June, or June 14th?
Of June 14th.
With that, I'll second that motion, and also say that the part of this process is exactly this. Now we're turning it to the public, and we we would hope that we would get some input from them that may help us refine that if there's a need for it out there. If our public sees something different direction, then they see us going with that, we certainly would appreciate their input.
Yes.
That's what this process is about, so encourage feedback at this point.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second.
Ivy, aye.
Granger, aye.
Bellison, aye.
Nice, aye.
Turek, aye.
All right.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I was gonna mention this, because the public may say, well, that's great, how do I do that? So this budget now will be available on the city website. If you'll go to the finance page, you'll be able to see it, both in a in a descriptive form of the budget itself, as well as an illustrative form with graphs and other things that might be helpful for them as well. There'll be copies here. Denise, do we still, the library as well? Yes, and at the library, so just so they know where to go.
Okay, let's make sure it's at the library on Tuesdays, because that's Dog Day, and kids go there to read with the dogs, so.
That'd be nap time.
Thank you. Item nine, report anything to report from your assigned committees.
I've got something. I just wanted to echo what you said, Mayor, the Cotton Days was fantastic. Just to see so many people out enjoying the activities of the day, and our staff that worked so hard to bring it about and volunteers. It was, it was just one of the finest days I think that Washington City has to offer. But it was just awesome. And I just wanted to mention the pancake breakfast. You know, it was fun to see everyone that was out supporting the Ironman. And our mayor has such a good way with people, and that they were just drawn to him. It was fun to see that. And he cooks a mean pancake too, but, you know, the youth council was there, set it all up, took it down. Again, we had volunteers, and and to see people come by, and one of the comments was that, well, where do we buy our tickets? We go, it's free. And they were like, we've never heard of that before. They said, just go enjoy. You know, the food was donated, and the time was donated, and that was a wonderful, it was a wonderful experience for me to be a part of that also.
So it was the mayor that threw them there, not the pancakes.
It was Councilman Granger that threw everyone there.
It was some friends that I brought over that were.
We actually ran out of drink, and we had maybe 20 pancakes in a left, so.
Well, let's mention who donated the sausages.
We would really like to thank IHOP for, they donated the, they actually mixed the batter for us, they donated it, and the sausages. Did they do the sausages also? And so we, IHOP, if you're listening, thank you very much. They've done it every year for the last four years, so we're really grateful for that, and it's been a good thing.
Been a great asset to our community.
Yes, they have. Very good asset to Washington City, so. Eat at IHOP.
I want to just report as the backup now to the planning commission that I've observed them closely for a year and a half now. And my sense of that is, is they're just getting better and better and better at drilling down into what the real issues are with these properties that come before them and the decisions they're making. I appreciate very much their commitment to that job. They're working hard at it, it's my sense of it. I hope you let them know that, if you really appreciate the way they're doing their jobs. And the cooperation they're having with us, and the chance that we have for those quarterly meetings, and just to make sure that we're working well together.
We have one this month too, right?
Coming up.
33rd.
Yeah, it's good.
Thank you, Councilwoman, that's a very appreciated comment. Anything else? If not, we'll have City Manager report, and then we will, we do have a, I need to go to a closed session to discuss pertaining or potential litigation.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of projects I would update the council and the public on. As you know, over the last little time you've seen this, we've been repairing some of those manholes that have been crumbling, and that project has now been complete. As you can see from out here to the west of us, the Main Street Stormwater Project is well underway. That began the first of May and should be completed by the end of June, and that'll be a really great project for us, especially considering, you know, some of the events and that we've had over the years. Update on the Greenspring Substation, the blockwork should be completed by about mid-May, and then of course, the gate work and other things, and the power line work is underway with weekly updates on that issue. So we're kind of on schedule with all of that as well. We're having discussions on some road right away, particularly with Merrill. That continues to go on. We met, Barry and I met with the owners of the property to the west of the Boilers. This is for the Warm Springs Boilers project. And of course, our goal is that we were trying to fill out if they would be willing to do a portion of their property swap so that we can line up the entryway to that intersection, to make it an intersection to, what's the name of that subdivision? Mill Creek? Yeah, Mill Creek Springs. And a great, great visit. I think that they're on board, and so we're kind of working through that. If not, we have another alternative, but they're a big corporation. I won't mention their name, but they're a very big corporation, do a lot of development. And so I think they do have kind of even an interest on the other side for maybe other things as well, eventually some discussion with the city on other things. But great visit, very good people to work with, and they're very interested in doing that. Bill Jackson has been here to, and he's beginning the design drawings for the pavilion, the bathroom, and the outdoor kitchen for this, and of course, as we get the design drawings done, we'll bring those back to the council and work session as well too. But again, we're focusing on those things with Bill Jackson. And then I didn't remember if I'd mentioned this or not, but we completed that cottonwood trail resurfacing, and it turned out really, really nice, and so that project's all completed as well. So those are the really projects I wanted to update you on, so.
Any questions for the manager? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to a closed session.
Second.
Motion in a second.
Ivy, aye.
Granger, aye.
Bellison, aye.
Nice, aye.
Turek, aye.
Thank you, let's take. Thank you. Let's take a three-minute break.